We have more chairs over there.
Four chairs over there.
Five sixteen thirty. That's on the phone and I can't hear. What more work we started? It's not a gym. Which? Doesn't work after ten minutes, but we wanted to be honest. Yeah, one is. Exactly.
Call a regular city council meeting for Monday, September twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Order, roll call, please.
Borgerard?
Here.
Grams?
Here.
Kramer?
Here.
Pop?
Here.
Zins?
Here. Would everybody please stand? Pledge allegiance.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. To the republic which stands one nation under God. In this world where every justice is wrong.
We have the consent agenda. Everybody have a chance to look at that?
Mayor, a couple of things in the correspondence part of that. I would like to have five point five and five point nine added as supplemental information for budget meeting tomorrow night.
You wanna put a hold on payments?
Yeah, the one would involve holding a payment on the dues, so we talked about it.
Anybody else have anything? With those two items pulled, your motion to approve?
You need a motion to pull those.
Okay. Dan, you wanna make a motion to pull those?
So, motion to hold five point five and five point nine from the consent agenda.
Is there support? I'll support that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
And then you have a motion to pass first.
Yep. And is there a motion to approve the rest of the agenda? Consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Counselor Kramer, is there support?
I'll support.
Supported by Counselor Borgerard. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Guests and citizens, anybody reports from staff? Administrator Lamy?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Recreation Director West?
It's on.
Golf course, we've had a pretty good year out there. As of last week, I think we, Dan checked and we were up like seventeen percent on green fees and fourteen percent on carts, rec cart rentals, which is good. That's, that's our two big moneymakers out there. And other than that, the season's winding down and it all falls off pretty quick up here in September, so, and the arena we'll talk about later.
Public Utilities Director Jacob?
All right. I just wanna make you guys aware, the construction project at the wastewater plant was due to have start-up on the first of October. That is now being pushed back due to, it's out of our control. Minnesota Power needs to get there and run some power for us to be able to start up. So, in response to that, Boltland Mink turned in a letter to the PCA requesting the move of the date to the thirty-first of October. We don't think any other timelines will be impacted at this time. I'll let you guys know if that does happen. And that's pretty much all I got.
So, they have a date? Boltland Mink has requested that date? Has it been approved?
Uh...
They're taking it into consideration.
Yeah.
They said they'd be back to us in a couple of days.
Okay.
Yeah, last email I saw, there is no official approval yet. They are considering it.
Okay.
So...
EMS Director Olmstead?
Uh, August or seventy-sixth call. I see the ambulance just went by for their forty-fourth call already this month. We have a very, very busy weekend. Becky and I have been attending council and township meetings next week. I think we're going to Aurora regarding tax and districts. But I just have to...
Okay, thank you. Attorney Brumthoel?
Okay, thank you.
Reports from elected officials, Counselor Pop?
Uh, nothing tonight, Mayor.
Counselor Kramer?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Grams?
I have the library report from Sue Sowers. She finished up the summer reading program. They had a hundred and two kids signed up. They have two legal kiosks that are ready to use that were given to the library by the Minnesota Legal Services Coalition. You can use those for accessing legal resources, printing forums, holding meetings, and remote court hearings in private. They have a talk box installed. It's a privacy booth that muffles the sound. There's a laptop and a scanner. Those were given to them by funds from the Minnesota Department of Education. Two bestselling Minnesota authors are at the library September ninth, and the sectionals will be performing Tuesday evening at five thirty. And September twenty-second, they'll be showing the movie Where the Crawdads Sing at one P.M. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Borgerard?
Nothing to report.
And I don't have anything tonight either. Old business, none? New business, eleven point one, pay request number twenty-five from Grider Construction in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars for wastewater treatment facility project. Jake, is there anything you need to know on this?
No, everything else is, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Pop. It looks sort of like a usable building now.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the payment to Grider Construction?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Counselor Borgerard, is there support?
I'll support.
Supported by Counselor Pop. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Eleven-two, pay request number two from Lency Enterprises in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, five twenty for the Fisherman's Point Bathhouse Project. Becky, did you talk to? Anybody on this? Is this, uh...
Yep, it's for all in-ground work, so that's in-ground plumbing and initial slab. The brick is a couple of weeks out, and so we don't see any progress for a couple of weeks on that.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the payment number two to Lency Enterprises?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Counselor Grams, is there support?
I'll support.
Supported by Counselor Kramer. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Eleven-three, a significant industrial user agreement with Minnesota Power. Becky, would you like to explain this?
Sure. Jake and I met several, I guess once with Minnesota Power. And PCA is requesting that we have a significant industrial user agreement with any industrial customer, which is just Minnesota Power within the city limits. They do discharge to our wastewater treatment facility, so this is just kind of implementing some rules and regulations regarding that discharge to us, what limits they have to stay within, what they pay if they don't stay within those limits, those kinds of things. Helps Jake manage flows down at the wastewater treatment facility.
So, as long as they stay within these limits, you're, we're good to go, Jake?
Yeah, the only thing...
Had hits on in the past, is occasionally they'll have a hit on the low-level mercury, so now we have stuff in place for when they do do that.
So far, as far as our results for mercury, we have hits that I could put to them, so...
Okay. Somebody like to make a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Counselor Pop, is there support?
I'll support.
Supported by Counselor Kramer, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Eleven-four, liquor license transfer request from J-Way LLC, the Hoy Lakes Arena on October first, twenty twenty-two. Your motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Counselor Borgerard, is there support?
I'll support.
Supported by Counselor Grams. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Emergency medical services and fire department recommendation to hire casual part-time EMTs, firefighters, and firefighter EMTs. The hiring committee for the fire and EMS department met, interviewed, tested candidates from the sign-on drive conducted from August second, twenty twenty-two to August twelfth, twenty twenty-two. The committee recommends the hiring of the following applicants, subject to drug testing and background checks. EMT only, and please forgive me if I put your somebody's name here. Julie Ritzelainen, Emily Jager, Brooke Nellie, Alexa Dussler, Gil Ekman. Firefighter only, Travis Westlin, Raymond Schimman, Garrett Myerle, John Ridlin, Brennan Scott, who was also already an EMT, and firefighter EMT Carter Lunt. Is there a motion to approve the hiring of these individuals?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Counselor Kramer, is there support?
I'll support.
Supported by Counselor Grams. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Eleven-six, is the sign-on bonus agreement for the EMS and fire department personnel. In close of this draft sign-on bonus agreement for the personnel recommended to hire in item one, eleven point five, required the sign-on drive conducted from August second to August twelfth. Each employee would be required to sign the agreement and complete all terms to receive the sign-on bonus. And Mitch, you drafted this?
Correct.
Everything is good? So, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Counselor Borgerard, is there support? I'll support that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Eleven-seven, Fisherman's Point, twenty twenty-three online reservation rules and guidelines. The document enclosed outlines the customers' expectations for twenty twenty-three online reservations for Fisherman's Point. City Administrator Lamy has discussed the expectations of Tech Lights, IT firm, for the Fisherman's Point campground. Deputy Clerk Snetsinger and Accounting Clerk Karkin, and the document is subject to change based on administrative needs. For example, the timeframe regarding monthly reservation period may need to be adjusted based on technology compatibilities. The monthly rates are calculated at number of days in the month minus an approximately ten percent discount. Additionally, the clerk's office recommend increasing off-season camping from twelve fifty per night to eighteen dollars per night. These will be approved by the council through the twenty twenty-three fee schedule arguments. This is for discussion only?
Uh, no, that's to go ahead and approve those. Do we have to discuss? Oh, I did discuss.
So, I do have one question, Becky. So, I know that the monthly, or the monthly reservations is gonna open on Monday, April third, closing on the fifth, and the daily ones is gonna open on the fourth. Is that a typo?
Yes. Yep, so I had, I had spoken with Dustin about a twenty-four hour period, and then we talked about a forty-eight hour period. So, those are the kinds of things that are subject to change, is just how long do we think monthly reservations should be opened? Should we give people a week to reserve those monthly sites? Should we give them three days? Those kinds of things. And then however long it takes after that closes for him to reopen for nightly, that's when those dates would change. You know, if it takes them twenty-four hours to kind of reset all the sites and get them open for nightlies, or if it takes them forty-eight, tho- those kinds of things may be subject to change. But I just wanted to mainly run it by you, those additional five sites that I pulled off of the, they're highlighted, that I pulled off of the nightly reservations to open for monthly reservations. I kind of picked a smattering of popular and not-so-popular sites for that. I definitely did wanna get a few that were pretty popular into those monthly reservations, just so we have some more offerings for people who are interested in monthlies, so...
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
I would make that motion.
Motion made by Counselor Pop, is there support?
I'll support.
Supported by Counselor Grams, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Musabi's Youth Hockey Association request to discuss ice at the Hoy Lakes Arena. Lindsay?
Yes.
Step to the podium, please.
Do you wanna have Wade first?
Wade, um, do you wanna explain, just so, before we get to you, Lindsay? Just where we're at with the valve, the timeline on this, and when did it occur?
I talked to them late last week, and they said valves are supposed to be shipped out the thirtieth of September. And they said that's the only place they can get them from.
And this is commercial refrigeration?
Correct.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Go ahead.
I guess, you know, our concern is just, oh, sorry. Our concern is we had to, after four, and four was canceled, we had to let, you know, almost a hundred families know that there was no ice, so we've been getting a lot of questions about, are we gonna have a season? Are we gonna have ice? And so, we just wanted to kind of see if there were any other options in the backup plans, anything else being done to ensure that we get ice on this year.
Well, I have to believe, I mean, those guys are the experts at commercial refrigeration, and they've never steered me wrong, ever. So, if they're saying their valves are gonna be here, I expect them to be here.
Okay.
But, you know, it's all supply chain stuff. They've ordered them sometime in June.
Yeah, so that's our concern, is what, what is gonna happen if that doesn't come in. We have a lot of, I mean, this is half of our board, so we have a lot of people connections on our board in local companies that could possibly fabrication, other, you know, connections that we could get, but we haven't got a part number. And we're just wondering, could we get the part number and see if there's any other ways that we could help to get that part in?
Yeah, I don't have a part number.
Well, and we work with specific vendors for city equipment, and so we wouldn't purchase a part from another vendor and then expect commercial refrigeration to install it. That's not something the city does as far as business practice.
I've been working with those guys for twenty-five years, and I know if they could get it somewhere else, they would've gotten it. That's, that's just the way that is, so I know if they could get that somewhere else, they'd have it.
Just saying. Go ahead.
When will we know if that's gonna be delayed again? Because it seemed like it was, you know, kept getting delayed last night.
All I know is when I talked to them, it's still, their vendor says it's scheduled to ship out on the thirtieth of September.
And we had not a date before, had we?
Yeah. No, they just said the end of September.
Okay.
Sometime at the end of September. When I called them in, they actually had a date now.
Okay.
Just so you guys are aware, I had a part on my dishwasher that went out in September, and it was February before I got that part.
I know that a lot of businesses are trying to have ice.
It's not just, you know, there's other things that are way out as far as timelines go.
Yeah.
And they couldn't give me a date on any of that either, so... Unfortunate the times we're in right now.
Another thing is, you know, the roof's running out of R twenty-two freedom, and some points not gonna happen. Don't tell me when that, don't ask me when that date is, but it's getting, there is no new R twenty-two available. The only stuff that's used that comes out of the ice rooms are going off-line. So, it's getting critical.
Call your legislators, ask them to go into special session, because our bonding bill is held up in legislature.
And that's where we get the...
That's where we get the money for updates, for the ice plant. Yep?
And it is planned to update.
We were, we were promised the bonding. Well, just so you're aware, too, that the bonding would not cover the four million dollars it would take to replace that ice plant. The, the, the decision to replace that plant would probably ultimately come to the taxpayers on a vote, on a referendum, if they're gonna subsidize whatever the balance would be to, to put that ice plant in. It's not a decision that this council's gonna make, so... Yeah, it's, and like... You know, it's, unfortunately, this is kind of getting shoved down our throats with the change in the R, the refrigerant. I mean, it's not a, something a decision we've made. This is something that I don't even know who's governing, either the EPA or who it is.
Some accord signed back in nineteen ninety-two or something, worldwide.
So, just like our wastewater treatment, I mean, we were, we were forced into spending ten-plus million dollars in...
Twelve-plus.
Yeah, to meet the criteria that...
Yeah, to meet the criteria that, you know, we had no decision in that discussion at all.
But Lindsay, it sounds like you're asking, let's say the part does not ship on thirtieth, and we do, don't have a new date where it's coming. Is, do we need to come up with an alternative plan, or does youth hockey need to come up with a plan of where these kids can get their skates on? Like, do we need to talk to Evlith and ask, when do you have open ice? Ten P.M.? Do we, yeah?
But against the deadline right now?
Yep.
There is no ice. Try out some rock, resort next week.
The only thing I could...
If there's not going to be ice, then you're gonna have the entire town of kids with the hockey season, because we will be past that deadline over there, and they will be under no obligation to do anything for us.
Have you guys already talked to Evlith to see if they had any open ice time?
Right, right now, happening right now.
Yep.
Actually, as to what they're doing, I think, we're just looking for support from you guys, knowing that there's going to be another plan.
The only alternative I can think of is a mobilized plant, and how much does that cost a month, Wade?
Uh, forty or forty-five thousand a month.
So, that would be the alternative, is a mobilized plant at forty-five thousand dollars per month.
In addition to the cost that we already has?
Yes.
Is there any grants that would be able to help subsidize some of these costs if we have to?
Not to my knowledge.
That all rings is a nonprofit that funds small community housing.
We, we have money in to, we have the bonding bill, one point five million dollars. We have a five hundred thousand dollar for Mighty Ducks. As far as anything else, I don't know of any other grant, uh, any grant program that would support a temporary cost like that.
Who makes that decision, and it needs to come to a referendum vote?
A referendum is a...
Do you guys decide to put on or on vote, or who makes that decision?
A referendum is a question to the voters. This council would pass saying that they want it to go to referendum. We would then inform the county as to the wording of the referendum. The county would then put that on the ballot.
But it's something you guys can do then.
We would request, yes.
Yep.
As a council.
I just, before you were saying that, that wasn't something that you, so I just wanna make sure.
No, I just don't, I think Dan said it doesn't, it's not a decision this council's willing to make.
I understand, I'm just worried where the request came from, if that's...
Yeah.
Yep.
We would make the request, but it's just that, it's not a decision that we're gonna make to spend the extra two million out of the, the regular budget, if we'd have to go to the, to the tall citizens.
Yep.
But the first step in that is getting that legislative appropriation, and unfortunately, we're just not there yet.
I wish we had some easy answers for you folks. Unfortunately, we don't.
Thank you if you can keep us updated, Wade, as to what's going on. If you're all in the special discussions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else we had that?
Nope.
Wade, I know you said you're partial to commercial refrigeration on that issue. Is it worth going out to other companies to see if there's anything they can come up with, or is it possible to bring them back in to come up with some?
I can call commercial refrigeration, but I, I just, you know, you're looking at the valve that was manufactured in nineteen eighty-three as part of the problem.
Is it possible to add additional pieces to make something work?
No, because if they, if they thought there was something we could put in there that would work, they'd do it. I am, I...
If we have fabricators, could they make something if we got the spikes for it?
No, is it? We just, you didn't, it's all over the...
It's just a, it's just a massive gas valve, where this valve has pressure, are coming to, to...
So, probably, I don't know.
Like I said, I'm sure commercial refrigeration would've thought of that.
Well, they don't, they probably don't manufacture it themselves, they buy from...
No, they don't, but if they knew somebody that manufactured it and could do it, I'm sure they would've had a...
But is there a possibility getting respect on that valve?
I mean, I could call commercial refrigeration up, see if they're still...
Would have the possibility of expecting that valve, I mean, or play dead it out, or you, like, figure out, they had a hundred years of experience together, and they don't have low pressure, high pressure, to, you know, do the plan.
I, I could check, but...
Wade, would you please look into it and...
I'll call them, I'll call them.
And just find out if it's something...
See if there's some alternate options of getting this, in case that part doesn't need it. I'm sure they're trying to fix it in the way that it's supposed to be, but if we can't get it, then maybe get MacGyver something up.
They, they knew when they needed that valve, so, I mean, I'll call them, but, like I said, I'm pretty sure that they would, they would, if they had another solution made, I'll be done.
And we bump into our next problem then, when we did talk about just replacing the O-rings there, but then you're talking about loss of Freon. And with the supply of Freon dwindling and dwindling, I don't know that we want to go through ninety thousand dollars worth of Freon in one year. Because what happens in next year when we have another leak, and then we have another forty-five thousand dollar loss, and then, is eventually, like Wade said, we're gonna run out of Freon, and we won't be able to have ice at all then.
What's the timeline looking like for how long we could last with what we have now?
Right now, it needs to get recharged. We couldn't put ice on with what we have now.
So, is there plans for that to happen, or is the plan to just wait till it happens and then say, oh, two thousand, so that we can't resist?
We have a request into the bonding for one point five million dollars, and then we have five hundred thousand dollars in Mighty Ducks money. And then we would put out a referendum to the public to pay the additional two million, probably three at this point of construction.
Anybody else have anything?
So, with what, the Freon we do have left, would that run for two years, three years? Like, how much, how long do you think that would last us?
If there's no leaks, it's, it'll last forever. But that system, how many leaks have we had in the last five years? Where parts go out and it leaks, and you gotta add more Freon. And you don't always catch it real quick, that's the problem.
And it's not just Hoy Lakes Arena that's dealing with this, there's many, many arenas throughout the state, so, and they're all in competition for that bonding money that, you know, all their communities are fighting to, to hope they're gonna be included on the bonding, so it's...
There might have been a hundred rings in trying to get bonding to that.
Yeah.
We're exploring the same problem in there.
We'll do the best we can.
What is the timeline of this bonding bill?
It was supposed to be done this past spring. The legislature closed session without agreeing on a bonding bill. Um, I know that we've sent at least two letters calling for them to go back into special session. The governor's unwilling to call them back into special session, so it looks like the next time they'll be back in spec, in session is next spring when they restart their twenty twenty-three.
Range Mayor's Association has sent out a letter requesting a session, but it hasn't gotten anywhere yet. There's no other questions? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Counselor Kramer, is there support?
I'll support.
Supported by Counselor Pop, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night, everybody.